It would be funny if that was the night and you come back after recess.
Yeah. All right, welcome everyone. Good afternoon. My name is Michael Newmark. Wow, this is really loud. Trying to keep it down here. I'm the administrative law judge for the Public Service Commission. Welcome to the public hearing for NSPW's application to adjust electric and natural gas rates. So I work for the Public Service Commission. It's the agency that's authorized to approve, modify, or reject the application from NSP. And when NSP files its application, commission staff and interveners to the case vet that application, there's some testimony back and forth in writing. And we're actually going to hold a hearing for the parties on September 16th over Zoom. There's not going to be a physical location for that. But what we also do, and so all that documentation that I receive at the hearing for the parties goes into the record in the case. The record is what our commissioner is used to make a decision on the applications. Our agency is run by three commissioners. And they'll review the record and vote in open meeting on the issues of the case. And once they come up with that decision, a written order is then drafted and released by the commission. And that'll reflect the rates that go into effect. It's anticipated on January 1st of next year. Also, part of the record is public comments. So that's what we're here to do today is take public comments live and also provide people an opportunity to file comments in writing. We've had the public written public comment period open since August 8th, and it's going to close on September 15th. And at this point, I had the number here. There's 21 comments so far filed on our website for written comments. And that's one of the ways you can submit a written comment is to file it on our website. The notice of hearing has a link to that comment page and also the QR code will get you right to the comment page. If you wish to file a written comment that way, there's also the mailing address. If you wish to mail a comment to us, we can read as long as we receive it by the 15th, we can accept those for the record. But the easiest way, if you're here, is just to speak your comment today. We'll take it in just a minute or two. In order to speak your comment today, you need to fill out one of these appearance slips. They're in the back of the room. As you came in here, commission staff has those. You just need to fill out your name, check the speak now yes box, and then I'll get your slip. And basic process is I'll just call out your name and have you come up to the seat here next to me. I'll swear you in, get your name for the record and have you give us your comment. So we're looking for your opinion on the case. And if, in case you do have questions about the application, you're not really sure what your opinion is. We can provide an opportunity for you to ask questions of the applicant and commission staff, but we would do that offline. We can take a recess for that if you need to. But since we've already started, we already passed the 1:00 PM period, we're going to take the comments we can, and then we can go into recess. If people need to ask questions offline, and then you can come back and give your comment with the answer in mind rather than just the question. So I think that probably makes a lot more sense for everyone to hear. Hear your answer. And the important thing is that the commission gets your comment because they're going to review it along with all the other materials to make their decision in the case. If you're speaking your comment today, we're going to transcribe what you say. We have our court reporter here. So she'll write down everything you say, but the important thing about making a comment live is that we can't have other people talking at the same time because we need to hear. She needs to hear what you're saying. So the commissioners can read what you're saying. And that's the important thing. So I'll give everyone a chance to make their comment, but just we need to be respectful and everyone just speak one at a time. So otherwise, we, well, I'm also conducting the hearing on Zoom and we have no one connected from the public so far, but I will be jumping back and forth in case we do have people joining us by Zoom. And another note is we will be back at 5:00 PM to do the session again and to take new comments from new people. But we do need to leave, we do need to end that session at 7:30. So we can only go as late as 7:30 because the building closes shortly after that. But the way the process works is we'll just take comments until everyone's done and then we'll go into recess and reconvene at 5:00 PM. And do the same thing at 5:00. So at this point, I guess there's not much more to cover. Yeah, I think I got everything. So I have three appearance slips so far, collected three, right? And if you get any more, just run them right up here. Thanks. So you have three comments so far, no one on Zoom. So let's call first Pamela Goodman, please. It's a really loud microphone. Have a seat here. Saying this where you in first, raise the right hand. This where our firm tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
All right. Stay your name for the record and go ahead with your comment.
Hello, I'm Pamela Goodman. The title is Stigene.
That's it. Just whatever you'd like to say. So I just want to note, since you are reading, do you plan to read off the page?
Pretty much.
So just make sure you don't read too fast. People tend to read fast and then her fingers start burning off. So make sure you just pace yourself there.
Thank you.
All right, great. Go ahead.
Well, thank you first of all for being here. Appreciate that. My name is Dr. Pamela Goodman, and I am an advanced practice population health nurse with expertise in public and population health nursing. I have over 40 years of experience having worked with families across the lifespan and in a multitude of settings and in various areas, including hospital to home care, school nursing and long-term care, with most of my practice having been in the community setting. I also am a previous public and population health nursing professor, having taught at both University of Wisconsin Eau Claire, College of Nursing and the University of Wisconsin Madison's School of Nursing. I'm here today because of families and individuals who are struggling right now to afford their medications, their healthcare needs, and to put food on their table. Have you ever been in a trailer home where there isn't any heat and see the little shoes of a toddler on a floor that is so cold that there is frost on the floor and your own breath freezes as you speak to the mom about needing to leave to find resources so she and her baby are warm and safe? I have. Oh, and by the way, after they were somewhere where they could be warm, I went to the pharmacy and I paid for the antibiotic that her baby needed for their ear infection because they didn't have the extra money to pay for heat nor for the antibiotic. She didn't have a 14% increase in her wages, let alone a 19% increase, which is what XL is proposing as a rate hike for gas and electricity. This area is already one of the most energy burdened locations in the state. These rate hikes unfairly burden families who are trying to keep warm during the winter and their lights on. This is all the while XL continues to build out expensive gas plants that are hurting the lungs of all of us, especially our babies, our kiddos and seniors as they struggle with asthma and other worsening lung conditions due to the deadly air pollution from particulate matter and other pollutants that gas plants generate. We know the investor-owned utilities such as XL focus more on building and building out gas plants which are linked to increased illnesses from the pollution they generate, leading to leukemia and other cancers, low birth weight rates, increased risk of preterm births, cardiovascular events, dementia, adverse neurodevelopmental and learning issues, and more. A quote from an article established or published in the International Journal of Environmental Research in Public Health states, "If energy burden households are unable to afford medical treatments, it is to be expected that the communities in which they live would experience increased levels of premature mortality, reduced life expectancy, and higher percentages of the population reporting they are in poor health." I want to remind you that XL is ultimately asking for these rate hikes to increase their profit rate, which is the highest rate in Wisconsin and higher than their Minnesota counterparts profit rate, with a portion of the rate hikes going to cover the cost of the $318 million wheat and gas plant here in our backyard. The rate hikes also support an overall profit for XL of 1.94 billion with a B dollars and the CEO salary, which is over $12 million. Is it fair to increase these energy rates when we have moms, children, and seniors who are having to choose between medications, food, rent, and whether they can turn their heat or lights on while a company is making billions of dollars of profit and the leader is making over $12 million? This proposed rate is about power and ultimate corporate greed at the expense of our neighbors and community members while exasperating and contributing to significant health issues. So we pay double through unfair energy rate hikes, which is also paying for healthcare costs caused and exasperated by the polluting gas plants that harm our health. The Public Services Commission is to ensure safe, reliable, affordable, and environmentally responsible utility services, meaning there is a responsibility to provide adequate rate payer protection to sure affordable and accessible energy for all of us in our communities. Please protect our families here and not large corporate profits and reject the 14 and 19% rate hikes for gas and electricity. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide testimony.
Thank you. Thanks. We have Brian.
It's your right hand?
Yeah.
Right hand?
Oh, sorry.
I do. You swear our firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Give us your name and comment.
It's Brian Goodman. It's pronounced Goodman, but it's spelled Guthman, G U T H M N. So.
Thank you.
And I'm here today because of belonging to Citizen Action. I've decided that I need to speak out. I'm a former egg instructor and and I'm now on a school board. So I see every day that our students and our struggling to pay their bills now. So I'm thinking that a 19 and 14% rate hike is going to increase the problem we have. We also are in an area where they're taking away monies for free lunch and reduce lunch programs and those kind of things. So I'm I'm really concerned that it's always been, I talked for over 40 years and I always thought, how can a kid learn if he is hungry and those kind of things? And I think that we need to spend our money making sure that people have, you know, kids and everyone has food on the plate. And this is not going to help with a 19 and 14% increase in their in their income is already not going up that 19 and 14%. We know that. So it's going to cut into that. And then, then you've got people that are unhoused now. It's a problem all over this country, especially in some of the areas here, even in Eau Claire. We have the unhoused people. They do get a house and they only have to pay X amount of their income, but their utility bills can be sky high. So it runs them back out and then they get on the problem where they are expelled from the house and then they have that on their record and they say, well, I've been evicted. And then they have even more problems getting into housing and that kind of thing. So it's kind of a cumulative effect that I've seen over time where, you know, poor people can't get ahead. And it seems like, you know, a guy that's making $12 million maybe could give some of that money back to the communities that they're taking it from and help these people to get by even a little better than they are. And the other thing is, I don't think from my experience with these power companies, we have solar on our house and now, you know, I pay X amount for mine. And if I produce over abundance, I get about a tenth of what I of what it costs me to buy it from them. So that seemed to me doesn't make any sense in that they're not encouraging you to to build solar when the solar will actually help them at peak times like a day like today when the sun is shining. I could be making electricity for them and to keep the peak down, but they there's no incentive because if I produce more than what I actually use, they pay me a tenth of what I have to pay from them. So that, and to me, doesn't make any sense either. And then they continue to raise rates that, you know, so to cover the cost. Well, they could encourage people to, you know, put solar on their place, have them pay it over a certain amount of time instead of having a great big investment and those kinds of things where it would help to move away from the oil companies and those kinds of things and onto more sustainable energy. So I guess that's my comments for today. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks. Thanks. Jeremy Gregert. Is your right hand? This where our firm tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Go ahead. Name and comment.
Thank you. So I'm Jeremy Gregert. Live here in Eau Claire, Excel customer. I I'm, you know, speaking on behalf of Citizen Action of Wisconsin, but also myself kind of interchangeably a little bit, but I was informed last week by Pam who just spoke about the specifics of this, this rate increase. Like I had heard in April or so about the, about how there was going to be, you know, a proposal from XL. And but really the specifics of it really didn't really get out so much. I think somewhat indicative you know, to have only, you know, three people here speaking is because I, you know, I think I think a lot more work needs to be done to figure out how to inform the public about, you know, the specifics. When you have a 19% electricity rate increase over two years or a 14% increase in gas, like that's a pretty shocking proposal. And anybody I talked to about it hadn't heard about it. And so I think fundamentally, there's, there's an issue there. And really just being, you know, and I, and I try to stay in touch with my utility company and some of my friends in the room who work for XL. And, you know, but, you know, so this, but this came out of a bit of a surprise. So as a, as a community organizer for Citizen Action in the northwestern part of the state, I, I want to you know, figure out what can be done to move toward you know, more affordable energy and cleaner energy over time and like as, as like something we really work on together as a community and this proposal. You know, it's just, this seems out of line with that kind of approach. Obviously, there are a lot of infrastructure costs and, you know, things that have been kicked down the road in terms of investments that should have made, been made a while ago, but this is, this is just going to have quite an impact on people who really are having a hard time of affording electricity and heat for their homes. And, and so it's you know, there are some ideas that are out there that, that our organization is working on to try to elevate, you know, how people can be involved in helping to produce energy and having utility companies as a partner and helping make that happen. You know, one of the ideas is on bill financing, having help from a utility company to to help people afford you know, solar or energy efficiency upgrades in their home. And being able to pay for it over time on their bill using the energy savings over time as opposed to having to make huge upfront investments that are difficult for people to afford. There's also, some states have a rate cap on the percentage of someone's income that can be charged for utilities. And you know, our organization is working on a 2% rate cap so that people wouldn't have to pay more than 2% of their income on utilities. And that would, you know, bring the utility companies to the table in a bit more serious way to actually work with their customers to figure out how to save more energy, how to move toward clean energy on people's homes like solar. Because it, because really like there are some people paying 15% of their income on utilities right now, and that's just not sustainable. And and that and a lot of people are living in older and older homes. You know, my house is 100 years old. And, and I'm looking at getting solar this year. You know, partly because of these rate hikes and, and it's, you know, but I, I'm technically paying two fixed charges because it used to be a duplex. The house used to be a duplex and has two different meters. And it's like 10 years ago XL tried to raise the fixed charge from $8.18, which was pretty outrageous. And luckily the Public Service Commission reined that in and didn't allow it to be increased that much. But that kind of thing disincentivizes solar because people have to pay, you know, a fixed rate. Anyway, and so yeah, I mean, I'm partly here just to like try to process the gravity of the situation where we have these huge increases without really feeling like we fully have the Public Service Commission or our utility company really on our side on like how to actually do this transition to clean energy together and how to make sure we're doing it in a way that is affordable. So I'm I'm interested in continuing conversations with my utility and with the PSC on this and through Citizen Action of Wisconsin, through our members who we have a couple here today who I heard about this from, as I mentioned, or it's just like trying, I'm trying to like follow, you know, what is happening. Um, trying, I'm trying to like follow, you know, what is happening. And, um, I'm trying to help other people follow it, but like, there was virtually. Virtually no one knows about this increase and luckily there was a news station here today, so, so the word is gonna start getting out, but like. I feel like there's a lot more work that could be done and, and I certainly oppose this, this rate increase. Both for gas and electric and so I want to make that absolutely clear, but. Also want to make clear that there's a lot we can work on together across. Um, you know, the, the state and, you know, the regulatory side of things as well as with our utilities who are. Like in Excel is one of the, the best utilities in the, in the country and for this to happen, for this to be proposed. In that context is, is particularly shocking to me, um. Think, and then we have, and there are incredible people that work for Excel, there's the front, frontline workers, the people that I've interacted with. Are all amazing and like we, and that, and I think. Um, you know, we just have a lot of opportunity to, to work together more, um, and. But the part of that is, is the PSC really standing up and saying. And, and speaking out and, and rejecting something that is unreasonable, so, thank you.
All right, thanks for your comment. Right, uh, sync up the record, it's all the appearance slips I have at the moment, so, um, nobody on Zoom. It's still fairly early, so I think we can go and do about a ten minute recess, we'll get back at, uh, one thirty-five. Just to see if people are trying to make it here, want to show up and give a comment, um. But don't forget, there are, we'll be back here at five PM to do this, do this again. Uh, also, uh, there's ways to comment in writing and a good way, a good document, we have plenty of copies of these appearance slips. So if you want to take some copies, there's the, um, the link to our online comment system. Uh, and the mailing address for mail-in comments, um, you want to encourage other people to file a written comment, please go ahead and do that. Um, also, just another note on the appearance, that there's also a link to the, uh, what we call the, um. The case management system, I've only been here, working for twenty-five years under the case manager system. Uh, the link right to this docket, so you can see all the documents that were filed in the case, uh, if you want more background. So there's, that this page is, gives you some more information about all this, uh, so feel free to take some of those and, and distribute them, uh. But, uh, but yeah, so I appreciate people coming, uh, but we'll go into recess about ten minutes, like I said, we'll be back at, uh, one thirty-five. See if anyone else wants to make a comment, so, uh, right now we'll just, uh, take a break.